I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning if you'd join us for a short prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here to lead the county. We just pray that, dear Lord, the decisions we make here today would be the best for the most people in the county and the decisions we make would be pleasing unto you. We ask you to lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and keep them safe. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. To declare this meeting open, if you'd join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this morning. Our agenda's not too lengthy, but we'll move through it just as quick as we can. Minutes of our last meeting have been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Next thing, we have a claims doc that's been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the claims.
I'll also make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Well, I saw the payroll doc that's been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the payroll.
And I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Project number one, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Project number two, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty Project number three, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Project number four, fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Project number five, fifty-seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Project number six, forty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Project seven, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That must be one of your projects, couldn't it? Project number eight, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Project number nine, one hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Project ten, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Project eleven, sixty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. Project twelve, one hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Project thirteen, one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Project fourteen, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Project fifteen, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Project sixteen is forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Next we have milestone contractors.
He did good. He did good himself, wasn't he?
Project number one, ninety-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty Project number two, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Project number three, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Project number four, fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Project number five, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty, three, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Project number six, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Project number seven, it's a hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Project number eight, seventy-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty Project number nine, a hundred and six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five Project number ten, seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty Project eleven, sixty thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and twenty-five cents. Project number twelve, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five Project thirteen, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Project fourteen, I'm sorry, what did I say that was?
One thirty.
One thirty? Okay.
Twenty-two.
Project number fourteen, a hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-seven dollars and fifty Project fifteen is eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Project sixteen is forty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Is the grand total of all the projects is one million, three hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents. Now we'll move on to the chip and seal projects. First bid's from J. H. Rudolph and Company. How about this, they put a little tab on there so I could go right to it.
There you go.
Thank you very much. Project number two is forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. Project number three, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Project number four, nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. I struggle with them little numbers like that. It just don't look right. Project number five, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars and twenty-five Project number six, sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty Project number seven, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Project number eight, eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Project number nine, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Project ten is a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. A total of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents.
Sorry, sir. On the page before that, project one, that's on that page.
It could have been. I just went to the tab. Yes, there is project one, I'm sorry. Sixty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. I got to figure those out to the total, that would've been, we'd been missing one there. Do you feel better, Ed?
I do.
I knew exactly what you were going through. I watched it. Project number one, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven Project number two, sixteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents. Project number three, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, sixty-one Project four, three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. Project number five, twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty Project six, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. Project seven, thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Project number eight, sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty Project number nine, fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents. Project number ten, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty Total of all projects is four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Can you read the project number one again?
I can't if I can find it, Shannon.
It was forty-two, eight sixty, thirty-seven.
Thank you, Marvin. Excellent. Total bid for E and B. For E and B paving, our first bid, their total for all projects was one million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Anybody that's keeping track? I want to take this second here to thank everybody that did bid. I know that it's a lot of work to put these together and we do appreciate your efforts. I would entertain a motion that we take these bids under advisement, let Marvin check over for the legalities and allow Roger Hamilton of the Highway Department to proceed with the projects as to the low bidders as many as available.
I like that motion. I'll make that.
I'll second that motion.
And I do appreciate everybody bidding, thank you all very much. Next on our agenda is the money quotes for the event center. This is from last week. I have, I have spoken with the president of the Event Center Board. Their recommendation is we award the contractor Chad Moody. He was the low bidder. So I would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Next we have a bead letter of support for Joint. Marvin, you want to, anything you want to say about that?
Joint is doing work in Wright Smith and Jefferson Townships and that proposes to turn south. This is a new project to piggyback a next level communications grant that they already received for installation of fiber. They submitted their packet and of course were told that their packet was incomplete because they did not have a letter from the county. But the broadband authority apparently asked them to see if they could get a letter from the county and to get that into the packet. So they were given some extra time to see what could be had. The most significant thing about the proposed Joint project is that along that route of the next level communications lines that they're building, plus any additional build, the money would allow them to connect client homes and businesses at no charge to the client homes and businesses, whereas their normal connection fee is, if I recall correctly, two hundred and fifty dollars to cover the first hundred feet from the trunk to the end connection, but then fifteen dollars a foot after because fiber's expensive. And so this will make a really significant difference to people along that route who are particularly more than a hundred feet away, but also it's an area where I suspect there are a lot of fixed incomes and this would make high-speed broadband and internet available to those individuals with just stepping into the contract and not paying a connection fee. And so they've asked for a letter of support reflecting those things. I've circulated a post letter among you and that's what this is about. Let's see. Mr. Derry? That's what I thought. Do you want to add anything to what I've said? And if you do, please step up to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that there is no cost to the county. This is just to aid the hookups for the customers and we've already been awarded the next level grant that runs through this, that section of the county and this would just come and chunk off from that and serve those homes.
Well, I think we want to help everybody who can.
There you go.
I mean, it's, it's just going to be beneficial for everybody. I just wish it was in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion that we provide the letter of support for, bead letter of support for Joint.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Next is the Comcast internet update. Marvin, I think you've got something on that, too.
I'd recover quickly. At the last meeting, the commissioners approved entering into an agreement with Comcast to provide fiber, gigabit broadband circuits to the courthouse and to the jail. And a price was given to you at that time that turned out to be incorrect at the time. An honest mistake. Neither Michael nor I had the quote sheet in front of us and did not remember that the low dollar amount that you approved actually included a third connection to community corrections, which would have added another three hundred and eighty dollars to the package. The original contract for broadband fiber connections to the jail and courthouse each would have actually ended up being eight hundred and twenty dollars. And the quote sheet doesn't say whether or not that included the modems or not, because they are specialty modems. In any case, Michael went back to the vendor yesterday and confirmed that they would do the two circuits for seven hundred dollars per circuit, plus thirty-nine ninety-five per modem per month. And so we end up just a little bit over ten dollars over what you actually thought you were doing, but we wanted to keep things clean and transparent and get that back in front of you. So we do have the post contract today for the fiber internet for the jail and the courthouse at a total of fourteen hundred, seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents per month. That is a three-year agreement. This is not absolutely an adhesion contract, take or leave it, but the process of the group and the issues that we would be asking for are likely to be turned down, in my opinion. And so I'd like to suggest that you treat it as a taken or leave agreement. You do have the authority to take it, it's just being aware of it and consciously on the record accepting it as that.
I don't think ten dollars will make or break this deal.
Yeah, for days we're, we're shaping that.
No.
So I would entertain a motion to enter into the Comcast contract.
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next we have Everpresent Travelers MVR policy. Seems like this has been going on for months already.
Let's finish it then.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. Marky, anything you want to say?
No, I looked at the document yesterday that Marvin sent out and I think it'll be good to go.
Mr. Michael, I have thoughts and comments. I'll hold them down today. I got all my questions answered yesterday and concession, a concession made and I think I would help everybody. So I'm, I'm good.
Well, you're making that motion, I'll second it.
I'll make that motion that we do accept it. It's going to have to do something in any way and this is as good, good a plan right now as we've come up with. So I'll make that motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Just for clarity and the record, that's a motion to accept resolution number 2025-02, County Motor Vehicle Records Policy.
I thought that's what you said.
That's what I said, yeah.
Like I said, clarification.
All in favor? Thank you all for getting that off my agenda. Commissioner's Board appointments, and we've got a couple this morning. Teresa Sp... Teresa Sparks is for reappointment to the Woodington Public Library Board. Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to reappoint her to the Woodington Public Library Board.
I'll make that motion.
A motion to have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? And then we have a new appointment, Sharon Sparks to the Cemetery Commission.
You'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? Economic Development, bring him in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll be brief. Continue to work on Project Prometheus. You know, this is when all the fun starts. Making connections with utilities and Simon and answering questions, asking questions. I'm actually having lunch with Simon today, so I've got a list of questions I want to ask him, namely timeline. If there's anything that you would like me to ask, let me know and I'll, and I'll.
Many interesting.
Bring in two million questions. I know. I'm just, I'm just going to see what he has to say about timeline and then go from there and I'll let you know what our conversation is like. But obviously, housing is crucial at this time with the projects coming in a couple of years and of course, along with that broadband. And where did Joey say they were going? Where did Joey say they were going?
It's running against Jacksonville over to, towards Woodington and then south.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. I missed that. And right now, I'm just, I'm still short-staffed posting the job today. This has taken some time, but, so I've been playing a lot of catch-up mostly, but Prometheus is very time-consuming in a good way, but do you guys have any questions for me?
No, I don't. Keep up the good work. Keep us in the loop.
I will. Thank you. I'll let you know what Simon says.
Thank you. County Attorney.
Nothing additional.
For discussion items this morning, I've got the Eastern High School, the losses of their mental health providers. I don't know if there's anybody here from Eastern.
Yep. Good morning. So my name is Dawn Hostetter and I am the Director of Corporation Services for Eastern Green Schools. And I'm here today because our students do not have adequate mental health services and I'm working to secure the services they need. So the Hamilton Center holds the contract for the school-based mental health services in our region, but they have not been meeting our needs since 2011. And at the same time, other willing providers have been blocked from stepping in because of the Hamilton Center's contractual control over the region. So we need Hamilton Center to step back to be held accountable to provide these services with intention, because they're receiving over $7 million, which will provide you some information on that, to service Green and other counties, yet our community members are not getting the help that they need. So the heart of the issue is the Hamilton Center is being provided, funded to provide mental health support, but our students are not receiving the adequate support that they need. And you'll hear from others today how other community members are feeling the same way. Despite multiple requests for increased staffing and support, Hamilton Center for nine years has denied our requests for that. And now with other willing providers to step in, we are being blocked and we, Eastern Green, we are being blocked because of Hamilton Center's exclusive contract to the region. So our recent, a little bit of background, our recent provider was rescinded service due to a company buyout. So they had four employees coming in, providing services to Eastern Green at no cost to our school corporation. The company buyout said we're done with school-based services. Another provider was willing to come in. They said we will provide the same support. We will provide four employees at no cost to Eastern Green. They all build through Medicaid. Once that went to the higher-ups in Indy for this provider, I received this message. It is "With much regret that I must rescind our offer to provide Eastern Green with clinical support services. As our higher-ups reviewed our offer, it was decided at the state level not to expand our current services to new locations due to CCBHC contractual obligations. It is believed that due to these new requirements, Hamilton Center should be able to meet the school's needs. And since they have an office in Green County, our higher-ups do not want us to impede on their service area." But here's the problem. Hamilton Center has a contract, but is not providing sufficient services for us. Other providers want to come in, but are being blocked because of the policies in this contract that Hamilton Center has over our region. Meanwhile, our students currently are going without the mental health support that they need. And our superintendent has requested of Hamilton Center, just a blessing, to allow this other provider to come in and we've received no response from them. So this is why I'm here today, is just to ask for some accountability, some action and solution, so that we can get services back into Eastern Green. And I'll let you lead.
Yeah, this originally came out of our school safety meeting. So we meet twice a year. It includes all of the schools, law enforcement, mental health providers, student resource officers, the probation department, prosecutor's office. And the subject was brought up, I think, by Indiana Health, Health, so IU Health, about the level of, and statistics in Green County related to different concerns related to safety with youth. So the discussion was brought up about the amount of money that comes through your community mental health provider, which is federal funds. They get certain federal funds to provide certain services to the areas that they serve. What's traditionally happened, I've been in my job since 1997. I am the juvenile probation officer. And I said I've probably interviewed probably 30,000 people since 1997 and I've gone to six school corporations over the last 17 years every week. So I'm vested in being in the schools and seeing what goes on. What's happening is I think that money is funneled through Vigo County, which is the head office of the Hamilton Center, and then the rural counties suffer. So they're saying, and I would like to find some accountability there to the federal government, yeah, we're providing these services, but they're only providing them in the locale of Vigo County and our outstanding areas really suffer for that. So children suffer for that. It affects my job. It affects the sheriff's department's job, because we're having to intervene in situations that there's a lack of services provided, which cause other issues, and then law enforcement is the catch-all for that. So we often get county resources. It affects our hospital. It affects the sheriff's department, myself. We intervene in situations that services aren't being provided. I don't know how this can be rectified. The school has their unique problem there. I do know Shacklemack gets served virtually from the Hamilton Center, so students who have mental health problems there see someone on a Chromebook, not in person. Linton does have one person in person and Bloomfield has another person that comes in person.
One day a week.
Yes, one day a week. Not the rate of services that Eastern was getting from adult and child at their school. So as we all know, our county has some serious issues. They continue to increase as well as our state. And we're just asking for our local provider to give us some information as to what money they're receiving, how much is spent here, and what actual services are they providing. I've been in situations where they have said, hey, like get yourself into trouble so then you can have state contracted providers. Provide the things that we're supposed to be providing, which are people who are contracted with the state if a child's involved with DCS or probation, which they should be providing right off the count, which then in fact, overloads the county, the contracts with the state to provide those services, which they're supposed to be providing themselves. So it's just a consistent problem and schools, it makes safety go up as far as higher risk when we don't meet the needs of our students, which then involves the rest of them. So I'm only here to advocate for constituents, the people I serve that are not having their needs met by the Hamilton Center. I don't want to get rid of the Hamilton Center. I just want them to do better and do better for our people and be held accountable to the funds that they get and what they're actually doing. That's all.
One other alarming fact I do want to leave you with is according to the Child Fatality Review Team in the years 2018 to 2022, Green County had the highest child fatality rate in the, rate in the South Central Region. So we are, we are the leading county for child fatality. So there is a need there. We are suffering because of it, because we're not addressing all the mental health concerns, suicides on the rise, that sort of thing. But you know, with us being at the top, it is concerning and it is concerning for all of us, I think.
Have you sat down with the Hamilton Center?
I, so in 2011, so we had services with the Hamilton Center from 2011 to 2020. And I repeatedly begged for more services. I sat down with the office manager multiple times, asked for additional services. I was repeatedly declined. The head honcho from Terre Haute came over. I sat down with him on two different occasions. Basically, he came over to put me in my place. He did not have any, I mean, nothing changed. Nothing changed. So then in 2020 is when I reached out to our most current provider and they came in the fall of 2020. Hamilton Center came back and said, give us one more chance in 2021. They had a grant with a program called Ripple FX, which is an online platform for kids to use for like social, emotional learning type things. I said, okay, I'll give you another chance. Come on back in. So with the grant, they were providing, they said that they were going to provide the platform, which they did. They were going to provide Chromebooks, which they did. They provided us with 30 Chromebooks and they were going to provide us with a person to come in and run groups for the kids, some like, just some little group therapy type things. So I organized all of the groups for the Hamilton Center and two months later, nothing has, hadn't heard from them and I haven't heard from them since. And that was in 2021. So I have, I have tried sitting down with the Hamilton Center multiple times and it just hasn't worked. And that's kind of where we are right now. And that's why when this other provider was willing to come in, we were like, great, because they were going to provide the four employees like we have now. But then they were, when the higher-ups got it, they were like, we can't do that because Hamilton Center has the contract. So we're trying to get a blessing from the Hamilton Center in writing, so that we can get to this other provider to say, hey, Hamilton Center agrees that you can come in and do these services, but we've had no answer from Hamilton Center on that. So I don't, we just wanted to bring it to your attention.
I don't know that you can do anything, because it's an administrative code, right? And it's, we're just here to let you know what's going on. Like, there's just some stuff for you to.
I'm kind of lost what we can actually do.
I don't know how we can, like, it would be nice to get actual like information from them and then.
Hold them accountable.
Yeah, like, because I, like what they're saying they're supposed to be providing is not actually what's going on. The funding is still there with the lack of the resource, which this would be an example. So how do you hold their feet to the fire? Just make them do better. And that's my reason for being here, because it affects me every day and the job that I do and the lack of resources. And it affects our state. It affects our county and it affects our people, so.
We have a couple of stakeholder, pretty key stakeholders that aren't here today, because this is our spring break week. Doug Loos, our superintendent, would like to speak at some point. If you would welcome him to hear it. Emily Baugh, which she is the fetal and infant mortality review. She's the project manager. So she has lots of stats on Green County specifically that I think would be beneficial just for you to know about child fatality in Green County and where we rank and that sort of thing. So if we could maybe continue the discussion to April, those two would be here to give you some more information. I don't know if that's possible, but if you could take that under advisement.
So do I understand, you had four full-time employees there?
Right.
A prenatal provider?
Mm-hmm.
And it didn't cost you anything?
It didn't cost the school anything, because they're billed through Medicaid.
And you have somebody lined up that'll provide you with four providers?
Yes, but they, they rescinded their offer due to this contract with our region.
That's, that's all you're looking for, is a release from Hamilton?
Yes.
And you can get the four providers from some other source and you'd be happy with that?
I would be happy with that, but I just also want you to know that other Green County schools are, also should be receiving these services.
We give Hamilton some money every year and they provide us with a yearly report. He comes and pamphlets that has what services they provide. So I mean, we've seen that.
We're just going to give you, like, one is just a constituent. I don't know if this other person that wrote you this letter is someone who lives in Green County, but this is just a family that actually receives services. Just write a letter anonymously and then attach that as Department of Mental Health information. Like, I'm not an expert at this stuff. It just shows the amount of money. If in fact, that's $7 million over year, that's $21,000, $21 million that they've received to cover our county with specific requirements from the Department of Mental Health that they're supposed to be providing based on those monies. So I just believe in holding people accountable for doing their job, you know, and that's what we expect and it would help. If we had better services, it would reduce the sheriff's department, our local law enforcement. They respond to mental health emergencies. This past week, we had four incidences with one child that were mental health emergencies in the middle of the night, during the day, that required the sheriff's department. And it affects the hospital, because those kids are brought to the hospitals sometimes for mental health status examinations through the emergency room, if it's after hours, right? So it doesn't impact all of us. I just want our county to get what we deserve and what we're entitled to and our constituents are. So this is just for you guys to look at. This was one Dawn brought and the other one was just a family that I see weekly that I've probably worked with for the last five years and have been through a lot with them, with the Hamilton Center. So I have on-the-ground experience. I just want them to do better. That's all.
Did you not have any, any help from Hamilton Center in 2024? Well, they say that they treated 289 youth through that Green County and Eastern Green School was one of those, as mentioned, one of them was very old and late.
So they could be seeing kids if the parents decide, like, if it's an outside mental health source, so if the parents decide outside of school to take them to Hamilton Center, that's a possibility. The Hamilton Center saw no students in our school during 2024.
How many students were served through the other provider in your school?
So we have 45 students being served through the other provider in our school. So if you compare the numbers that they're telling you that they're serving, 45 students were being served from our other provider in our school every single day with, with four of their employees. And it was all built through Medicaid. It wasn't taking any funds from anywhere else, from the school, from the county, nowhere else. It was simply built through their Medicaid.
Schools have their answer.
If they could have been treated at home, you wouldn't have known about that.
Correct. Correct.
Or if they were listed and they didn't treat you anyway.
Correct.
This is our report.
I just didn't think about bringing mine with me.
It would be nice, like, this is just random idea, but to actually like survey our constituents. Like, have you ever received services? What's the level and quality of the services and what could they do better? It looks like the Department of Mental Health requires, required a survey and that's in here and it's specific to the Hamilton Center. Their numbers may be a little skewed too, but on here, you'll see numbers served per county that they're responsible to provide services to, but it's specific to what the Department of Mental Health requires. And it could be Medicaid based only or a specific diagnosis. But the numbers have dropped and they're a little bit lower. But if you listen to the testimony of the people who are on the ground law enforcement, the numbers have gone up significantly. So just asking for more help, like, that's all I'm saying. The state really wants us to have Medicaid build providers before they even consider contractual people that they're having contracts with, want a child adjudicated, link when they're found to be a chance. They want us to go through Medicaid provider and that's the Hamilton Center. But if you don't see somebody for two months and it's on the phone and they call you, that doesn't help when we're called to the residence, you know, every week for an episode. So sometimes those people end up, or children end up adjudicated or criminalized because the lack of services that they have. So I'm trying to prevent that from happening. It's not necessary, not in every case, but we need some help. So that's all I'm saying. I'm just advocating. Just for your reading pleasure.
Thank you.
Here you go. You're welcome.
Thank you for listening.
Sure, thanks. Thanks for bringing to our attention.
Do we have any elected official or department head comments this morning? Do we have any public comments this morning? Oh, well, hi, Sherri. Wait, honey, or something.
Good morning.
Morning.
I just wanted to mention that we had a successful fourth year of our sector symposium that went on last week. And I wanted to share with you guys that Indiana University has asked us to present at their rural conference on our food as medicine program. So that's, yeah, an event at French Lake. So I wanted you guys to be aware of that. I think I gave you more than one. you more than mine. Thank you, that's it for me.
Thanks, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Do we have any other department head or elected official comments this morning? Do we have any public comments?
My name's Sheriff Abram, this is Mike Hudson, and we have a petition from the property owners on North Hudson Lane. Recently, we became aware that the state had designated that North Hudson Lane measured a distance of 1,320 feet, and this is well beyond anything we knew and extends into what we've always considered private property. So, we would like to request that the designation be corrected to 607 feet, and that would start from the center of Gardner Road, and would, it would include the mailboxes that are actually on that North Hudson Lane, with an additional 50 feet beyond the last mailbox, so that the mail carrier can turn around and really strike right in. But we are requesting that the 713 feet beyond that, that evidently the state considers public, would be corrected, and I guess it's vacated or whatever, but just corrected to reflect it as private property. I've attached a power of attorney, I'm speaking for my mother, Janice Abram, who's the property owner, and we have signatures from each property owner on North Hudson Lane that's affected.
I don't know where this is at. There's a road there now that goes on back.
It doesn't go on back. It, uh.
The 1,320 feet would include gravel, even go into a grassy area where there's an RV sitting.
It hasn't all been maintained. It's been maintained just a little past the 700 and some feet that she's talking about, up to this point. And I was asked by another neighbor up there for the right-of-way ended. And we made it off the right-of-way that we had recorded and marked it, and then all this came, comes about. And this is the property owners, up and down that little section of road. There are no others. And if you have the power of attorney for your mother, she owns all the property back there.
I've attached that to the back, so you can call and ask me questions, or speak. And I know when we talked, I talked with Mr. Michael on the phone, we have planned, that property's been in the family for decades, I'm not even sure how far back, ring grandparents, and have no plans to change that. So, this is just our first step to try and get it corrected.
Marvin, is there any problem with?
I think we have to have a public hearing.
Do we have to have a public hearing that's called Blums? Probably all belongs to the same person?
That's what the statute says. Because people may have comment regardless, and the emergency process notices the opportunity to be heard. It's a non-heard, that's what the law says.
Well, if that's, if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. I mean, it's not like a, it's a big problem, but. So, the road doesn't go anywhere, and you own both sides of it?
Yeah.
I own on one side out there ways. Originally, what happened several years ago, the county, well, a gentleman came up in my driveway, I live right there, and her parents had always, I had a right-of-way back the road and everything. And, but, the mail had been coming to two mailboxes there, about a tenth of a mile off Gardner Road. And he drove up one day, and he said, this, this was like, several years ago, said, this is county road now, because the mail had been coming out there. And that was about a tenth of a mile off Gardner Road. Well, the counties always take care of that if we need stoning or something. But, and then the, the other day, that county came up, and they spray painted way on out on the private property. And so, the measurement now, rather than a tenth of a mile, is 1,320 feet.
Well, we had different, yeah, 1,300.
So, and we don't know how that, we don't know how that got changed, or when it got changed. Nobody was notified or anything, I mean, it just happened. And I guess that's a record that the county has. So, I mean, there's nothing out there, her sister lives out there. They've got the county road going right through the middle of her sister's RV now. So, so we just want it back, you know, to the way it was originally, and we allowed an extra 50 feet longer than it used to be, just so, you know, the mail lady can come out, turn around there. And because people don't need to be going out there, there's nothing out there. You know, on any road, you get people driving out, turning around. And so, we just want it back the way it originally was. And, you know, her mom and dad, which are both deceased, have always, I mean, I got an easement when I bought the land that I got there, to travel that road to get to my property. So, I mean, we don't know when it got changed, or how it got changed, I guess it doesn't matter. We just want it back the way it was, you know, and 50 feet more to, you know, to allow for the mail lady. I mean, that's all. We just don't want it a county road to, you know, open up to anybody to drive back there and do whatever. So, I own on one side of the road, her mom owns on the other side. Everybody that's along there has signed that. I mean, that's what kind of everybody wants. And so, that's kind of what happened, we just don't know for sure how that happened. But we appreciate your time, you know, we just, we just don't want it a county road out there. So, Marvin, is there any problem for us to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting?
Excuse me. I need to review the materials. If you want to schedule a public hearing, go ahead and schedule a public hearing, and I'll try to have the ordinance ready if I can do it based on the materials.
Okay, if you don't have enough time at our next meeting, I mean, do we, do we push it out about for a month, and does that give you enough time? I'm not, I'm not trying to hurry you.
No, I certainly want to get things done as quickly as we can. It actually, it would, yeah, push it out a month, and the reason why is because we're beginning to see issues with the owner of the newspaper as to timing of publication. And if not 100% certain that we can get the publication that we're required to have, and the lead time that we're required to have, with the direction the newspaper's moving.
So, we'll see you at our second meeting next month. Okay, that's great. Appreciate it, appreciate your time.
My phone number's on the, I don't know if anybody needs it frequently.
Okay. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I mean, I wish you had any problem with that, it's your district.
No, it's just, it's just shortened. I suspect what's happened in the past, the mail carriers do not have to, they're not supported to travel a private road to deliver mail. It has to be a county road, stay on county right-of-way. And I suspect the commissioner at that time, whenever that was, was probably asked about making that a county road for a mail carrier to deliver mail, I'm just guessing that. Brent may have more detail on it than that, but he looked it up for me on the, on the distance. And it's been a county road that fall back for the mail. And I'm sure it was not changed, I'm sure probably the 1,320 feet was the original that was put in there, and that's what's registered, I think, to the state.
Yes, sir. Could we get a motion to set up a hearing on the 21st, or April 4?
16.
Oh, it's on the first, so it'd be the 18th.
18.
Motion to set up a hearing on the proposed vacation of North Hudson Lane on April 15.
I'd entertain that motion.
No, I'm not good at motion.
Second.
All in favor?
You'll have to remind me of that too, Marvin, because I will forget before now then.
It'll be on my reminders.
Do we have any other public comments this morning? Commissioner Michael, you have any announcements?
I don't.
You know, sir, Grace? Our next regular public meeting will be April the 1st, 9:30 a.m. in this room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, may.
Second. All in favor? Thank you all for coming.